Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our November 28, 2023 City Council meeting. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council and according to open meeting law, for the convenience of the public, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and a Zoom link was posted on the agenda. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. Roll call votes are necessary if a member of the council is dialing remotely, and that is the case tonight. The nondiscrimination statement opener for City Council meetings reads as follows: It's the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental disability, family status, immigration status, gender, identity, or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. I'd like to take attendance for tonight's meeting. We have Scott Memard, who is our Ward One City Council. We have Jeff Worthley, who is at large. We have Tracy O'Neil, who is Ward Two. We have Jason Groh, who is at large. We have Sean Nolan, who is Ward Five and the Vice President of the City Council. We have Frank Maggiota, who is Ward Three City Council. We have Joanne Sinos, who is City Clerk. My name is Val Gilman. I'm Ward Four and also the City Council President in remotely. We welcome Jamie O'Hara, who is at large. I also want to make sure that I introduce members of staff that are here tonight. We have our C A O, Jill Cahill. And that is all. So first order of business.
We have Rosalie Nacasta, who's in the front row, the city staff as well.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. We have Rosalie Nacasta, who is a member of city staff. Welcome, Rosalie. Thank you. First order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the flag salute in moment of silence?
Council Memard will lead the flag salute and I will do the moment of silence. Council Memard.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation
Tonight's moment of silence is to memorialize John H. Burns, John who would have turned 80 on November 13th, passed away on November 9, 2023, at the Kaplan Nursing Home in Danvers after courageous seven-year battle with pancreatic cancer. Both John and his wife Molly have been an inspiration in their huge philanthropic initiatives for Essex County charitable organizations, including so many that had a wonderful positive impact for all residents of Gloucester. Here in Gloucester, their generosity and volunteerism supported Addison Gilbert Hospital, our newly-built K P N Y M C A, Pathways for Children, G M G I, and the Gloucester Education Foundation. John will be missed by all of those who knew him. He was a familiar face at so many community events. Our heartfelt sympathy to his wife Molly and his grown sons Peter and Joshua. John will be missed, but his legacy and generosity will be remembered by us all. May he rest in peace. Please join me in a moment of silence for John Burns.
Thank you, Counselors.
First order of business, Madam Clerk. First order of business is oral communications. Public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Would anyone here like to speak to the council for matters not on the agenda? And we typically start with folks that are here and then we go to Zoom.
Good evening. It's a great moon out there. We design boats. Advisers 66 Atlantic Street. Phil Bolger was born in Gloucester, been doing boats 71.
Can you speak louder?
Yes, I'm going to get right into the mic here.
Thank you.
I'll slowly learn. We design boats. We've been looking at what has gone wrong in the fishing industry, as you already know. We looked at federal code that froze the industry in times of the early 1990s. Industry froze in time for 30 years. It's not going to do well in any industrial context. You recently received out of our office a study, why do none of our Gloucester municipal harbor plans support a sustainable 21st century fishing fleet and port economy? That's a potent title, but it is what it is. In it, you've seen seven harbor plans for Gloucester, one for New Bedford, and two more fishing-related plans. None of them engage with the federal code of 1994. None of them have discussed why the industry is ailing. Today, I want to draw your attention to section 7.6 of that plan. You all have a copy of that in your inbox. 7.6 was done 2014. Why do I point to it? As I just talked with my coworker, my co-conspirator, Ross Fontiero, she and I were the leaders in building this 39 footer for the U.S. Navy. We started in 19 and 2011, and it eventually got done against all sorts of headwinds. Without her by my side, combined with 100 years old, we would not have gotten this done. I would not have got this done. Point is, this was 2011. 2013, proceeds of United States Naval Institute, that's a high-end, now 150-year-old, monthly, discussing naval matters, features an article by me and two naval officers on a very different project. I mention this explicitly for a good reason. In 2014, June, the same magazine, a four-star general speaks of our work in very positive terms. Why do I mention this? Because the harbor plan of a month after the good general spoke well of work coming out of Gloucester ignored all this work. Did not mention a boat project, did not mention our work with the U.S. Navy and then the United States Marine Corps. When the United States Marine Corps general speaks well of your work, you did well. So this all comes back down to our harbor planners never focusing on the federal code. And final footnote on this business, the same folks who did the 2014 plan are back in town. This time as economic analyst. Footnote on the economic analysis for 2023 is, if you don't respect the work done in the stand for the United States Navy, you should bear in mind the United States Navy, this year's budget is $250 billion. That's four times the Commonwealth of Massachusetts annual budget. If you don't think that the direct connection to that universe would be good for the economic development of this port economy, of this port community, then you should not be paid for any consultancy, anything, no services. You don't understand where you are. And if you don't have any respect for this kind of work, whether we work with our hands, Ross and I, or work with three and four-star people here and there, very rarely, I'll never be able to repeat that. But when we get this work done and it does not find its way into a public document like a Gloucester Harbor Plan as a sign of what we can do as a community, that's a problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne. Anyone else here in the auditorium like to speak to us for matters not on the agenda? Go on up, introduce yourself and your name and address. That would be great.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
I can never hear anybody back there. Gregory Doe, 13 Thompson Street. Good evening, Counselors. Two weeks ago, the City Council approved a $15 million infrastructure improvement bond that raised our taxes. That was submitted to you by Mayor Berger. How that got past the taxpayer of Gloucester should be debated. The infrastructure targeted was replacing seasonal water lines in areas of West Gloucester as laid out in the 2003 capital improvement plan, updated from the 2017 capital improvement plan. That capital first plan never mentioned the seasonal water line replacement. Both reports were incomplete, of course, because they neglected many other roads. Council members spoke eloquently in supporting this bond and the needs of the area served, that they really, the proverbial can have been kicked down the road too often, that these taxpayers, homeowners in these underserved areas deserve reliable city water and fire protection. But city took into assessing the needs of kicking it further down the road of other neighborhoods. Sorry, I can't read my own notes. Thompson Street is one of the, is a municipal city street located off the Conca Street, one of the oldest city roads in the United States. Six homes and a house of worship are located on Conca Street. We have no fire protection. We have a questionable water line. It is a public road and needs reliable infrastructure. We've had, the last 30 years I've lived here, two house fires, three brush fires, one conserving over 30 acres. The nearest hydrant from my home is one-third of a mile down the road. For the same reasons, the city installed deep water lines on woodmans and lake roads, both private, we request fire protection and no more can kicking. Two years ago, the city paved an open portion of Thompson Street. Why did they not install water down there then? For the same reasons they did on those other roads I mentioned. Thompson Street is a municipal street, install water, give us fire protection like you gave to, voted for those other neighborhoods. You're raising our taxes for infrastructure improvements. Stop kicking the can. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory. Anyone else here in the auditorium like to speak to the Counselors for matters not on the agenda? Can you all hear me in the back there? Thank you.
How you doing tonight? My name's Christian Dagley. I own Christian D Landscaping in Gloucester, 19 Hart Street. I've been in business as a landscaper for the last 25 years. I was supposed to be the fifth-generation fishing captain here in Gloucester, but the government made that tough. I'm here for the proposed blower restrictions and I today went to Mayor Power Products in Essex and got a battery-operated backpack blower. And I have the stats on the weight and the production of this. This battery, this is just the battery alone, not the tube, the fan, and the mount for this to go on. That's just the battery. This battery weighs 22 pounds. With everything else, with the tube, the bracket, and the fan, it is 38.5 pounds. I would love it for you to hold this and just see how heavy this battery is. A regular backpack blower is 23 pounds. That's a big difference from 23 pounds to 38.5 pounds. This battery right here is junk after two and a half months, they told me. $2,000 for the setup. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak to the council for matters not on the agenda? Seeing none in the auditorium, we have one person that has dialed in remotely. I believe it's Linda McCarriston. You are in. Linda, would you introduce yourself and your address? And you have three minutes to speak to us. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Linda McCarriston, 16 Quarry Street. Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear. Thank you, Linda.
Oh, good. Okay, I failed last time to, I needed a, I need a, an external microphone. So thank you very much. Good evening. I wanted to just raise an issue that perhaps I don't know enough about yet, and I'd be happy to learn more. I noticed that Jason Groh was seeking high school volunteers to participate in the Human Rights Commission. And of course, that sounds wonderful, you know, perfect thing for any student to do. I was put out by it a little bit because it came so quickly on the heels of the disgraceful attempt to bring down Jeff Worthley in his effort to connect with a high school volunteer at, you know, on voting day, to begin developing a high school volunteer community himself. But that's a separate thing. I'm concerned about this because when we read off our list of people and conditions that we want to be sure that we protect in our city, what we never seem, what we don't protect, at least what we don't include, is diversity of thought. We have every imaginable difference that you can be born with or that you can develop or create in terms of external appearance, but we don't have, we do not protect diversity of thought. And in fact, I think the city is one of the kinds of cities that the state Supreme Court had in mind when it pulled the Baron case out of the appeals pile, because I think it realizes that in many town governments, there really is, free thought is in a losing battle. And I'm concerned that if we get a group of high school students whose duty is going to be to be D E I teachers to all of those they meet, that we're going to be in much worse trouble in terms of lacking diversity of thought very, very quickly. What I think, when I see Gloucester, and I'm not a Gloucester born and bred, but I'm working class conscious, is I see this wonderful collection of diverse cultures, diverse nationalities, diverse languages, diverse cultures, diverse festivals, diverse food, diverse music, diverse religion.
Linda, you have 10 seconds to wrap up. Thank you.
Okay, and it's a working class, and it doesn't need to be picked apart and divided with D E I theory. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the council in oral communications for matters not on the agenda? C R, hand is raised. Introduce yourself and your address. You have three minutes to talk to us.
Oh, hi. This is Catherine Ryan at 17 Hyrock. I'm repeating some questions that I haven't gotten a response back to. I'm wondering how many quantity single-family homes have been built since 2014, which reminds me of the Railroad Avenue project with M A P C. And one reason I was reminded of it was a member of the planning board recently mentioned in the meeting that he had never, even though everybody's recommending housing decisions, that they hadn't looked at that report. So I was hoping that the M A P C final maps and reports could be sort of showcased with the current comprehensive plan page and link. So anyways, if you need a window, I was looking for 10 years, but maybe since 2014, the quantity of single-family homes and maybe if it could be separated to single-family luxury homes that are expansions that were requiring special permits and variances, because I think this is a subtlety of the discussion that it would be helpful in the community. Also, listening to the CPC committee and the planning board, both members and meetings this month mentioned, multiple members on both boards mentioned co-meetings together and among different boards. And they also mentioned that the city doesn't have exact units and numbers in any of the toolkits. I think one of the City Council members also mentioned that prior to the election. So really getting those numbers out ahead of time with the comprehensive plan would be helpful to everybody. And if the boards are having meetings together, that really reminds me, and the leaf blower was able to have a meeting ahead of time, even though you guys passed that on and didn't second that motion, I think it really would be great to have a meeting with everybody together talking about these housing issues, because it's beyond the fact that it's being framed as newcomers versus people who have lived here a long time. And I really think there's a lot of other layers of conversation that people are bringing up, whether it's, you know, about different diversity on panels and representation and neighborhoods. I noticed one committee that I went to recently, every single member was from East Gloucester. You know, that's not really showing a range on these boards. So anyways, I would like to know the quantity of the single-family homes, the quantity that are luxury expansions that required special permits and variances. And I'd like to have a meeting that is public like you did for the leaf blower so that people can have fuller conversations beyond these sort of boutique meetings that are being organized among boards that already are platforms.
Wrap up.
I think that is, that's it. I think that wraps it up for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Catherine. Mary Ann Boucher has her hand up. Mary Ann, if you'd introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to speak to us for anything that's not on the agenda. Welcome.
Thank you, Mary Ann Boucher, 93 Mount Pleasant Avenue. I agree with Catherine Ryan. At the debate, I spoke of meeting at the roundtable instead of meeting in the box. And it is time that we meet as one collective body in our city where we can have communication, open, transparent discussion. We talk about these meeting in the box. So many people are unaware of it. They don't know what it's about. But maybe if we gave a description in our Gloucester Daily Times, seems that the City Council has great access to the Times and can get the articles out, that we could have a serious discussion at the roundtable in Kairos Auditorium where people can speak collectively and have an open discussion. There's too much confusion as to what is going on in our city lately, and we need more discussion with everybody present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. We have Judy Steiner that is now logged in to speak to us. Judy, if you'd introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to speak to us. Thank you. You are muted.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, loud and clear.
Okay. So I'm just trying to get technical issues. So this will be short. I do agree with the prior lady as far as the communication.
Judy, could you state your address?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Judy Steiner, 29 Addison Street, apartment 2 R. So I agree with the prior lady here that talked about communication, especially through the, you know, we could do stuff through the Gloucester Times, although they don't have a really great circulation. But I logged in to re-ask a question that I brought up a couple of weeks ago regarding the zoning that's happening with this mandate for affordable housing door near a train station. And so my question then was about West Gloucester also having a train station and, you know, balance this out, because we always get hit in the Gloucester train station. I did receive a response from the mayor. I received a written response basically telling me to monitor Facebook page, his Facebook page. I have banned it, and I doubt I'm going to see anything anytime soon, but I think that's inadequate as far as answering the question and communicating with residents. So I'm expecting to get something more in writing with some details, and it's a basic question. What about the West Gloucester train station? Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Anyone else like to speak to us for matters not on the agenda? Barnaby, would you introduce yourself and your address? And you have three minutes to talk to us. Welcome.
Hi there. I'm Barnaby Prandergast. My address is 61 Fernell Street in West Gloucester. I just wanted to say thank you for the change to the composition of the Human Rights Commission. I used to work for an international family planning association, and we found having junior people, you know, youth, we used to refer to them as, on the governing board was a tremendously positive step, as the quite often don't get to hear the voices of younger people, and it's very difficult to get them engaged in the actual system of politics. So I have one junior here in this house who is somewhat interested in maybe getting that position, and paperwork will be flying your way in due course. So I just wanted to say that, and I hope you have a good meeting. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Barnaby. I'd also like to mention that Kenny Coster is on the call with us right now, and he is our auditor. And Pam Toby is on the call as well. She's the Director of Constituents and Communications Services. I see no more hands raised, so I will ask the city clerk to announce the next order of business. Thank you.
The next order of business is the confirmation of new appointment. Council on Agent Michelle Shimataro, term to expire 2/25/26.
I'd like to ask our O and A Chair, Council Nolan, to take on this part of tonight's agenda.
How you doing tonight, Michelle? How you doing tonight, Michelle? We're back here again for the full council. If you just want to tell a little bit about yourself and why you want to be in the committee, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Michelle Shimataro. I was born and raised and educated in Gloucester. My family still remains in Gloucester. I myself was here until 1982, when I ventured to California to start a new career.
We couldn't see their faces. Oh, hello.
Mary Ann, I think that you are still on the call. Mary Ann Boucher?
I am.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Michelle. Continue.
So I ventured to California and I started a whole new career. Back in 2004, I came back to Gloucester to retire at a later age. However, when I got here, I found my mom, who lived to be 99 years old, was needing care. So I took it upon myself, I do have sisters and they do have families. I was, I have no children, so it was, it worked for me. I bought a house in Gloucester. I took my mom with me. I was her caregiver for 14 years. My spouse, who became disabled in 2013 with Alzheimer's, I became her caregiver for seven years. I find that the City of Gloucester has a lot of opportunities for the elderly, but they don't know where to go and they don't know how to ask. They don't have the advocates that my mom and my spouse had. I find that I have a lot of time on my hands because I was forced to retire to take care of them, and I would do it again 100 times. I find that spending time at the senior center has given me an outlook on what the people, and I count myself because now I'm an elder, I find that there are things out there that they should know about, and they don't have the resources, or they don't have the advocate to do that for them. I want to be involved, and I want to get out there, and I want people to know me, and when they see me, to be able to ask questions and help them and point them in the right direction. That's about it. I mean, I know Rosalie, I know a couple of the people on the board here, and I find that it's the same complaint everywhere. that it's the same complaint everywhere. They don't have enough exposure, or we're all busy. We are busy. We have lives. But when you go to the senior center and you see 200 people sitting there, and they ask simple questions and they can't answer because nobody wants to spend, not, not that they don't want to spend the time, but they don't have the resources to do that. So people like myself, I have no children, I have no responsibilities other than myself, I want to give myself to the community. You have any questions for me?
Excellent. Thank you, Michelle.
All righty.
Do we have any questions for Michelle from the council? All right. Seeing none, I'll read the motion. On a motion by Council Majota, seconded by Council O'Hara, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Michelle Shimataro to the Council on Agent, term to expire 215, 26. I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motion is made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council Majota. Is there a discussion, councilors?
Thank you very much.
Wait, wait a sec. I would like, I would like to say something. So I am grateful that I'm serving on the board with you, and because she was temporarily appointed from the mayor's appointment, I, I was able to attend the first meeting that you were at, and she is going to be a great addition to our team. We're looking forward to her ambition, her excitement, and it's a pleasure. I will be supporting you tonight. Council Worthley.
Yes, I just want to say, Michelle, we haven't met yet. I think I saw you at the meeting two weeks ago. Thank you for serving. It seems you've been giving back your entire life. I would like to remind you that I had a great grandma that lived 208 years old, so you have plenty of years left to contribute. She volunteered till she's 106. So thank you very much. I think what you're doing at the senior center is going to be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd also just like to say one thing. I know my mom is looking down on me, and she's very proud.
Thank you.
Love it.
So there's a roll call vote that we need. Wait a sec. Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes, thank you.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross is absent. Council Grow?
Absolutely, thank you.
Council Majota?
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Welcome, Michelle, and thank you, Rosalie, for being here. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Councillors, would anyone like to remove anything that is on the consent agenda?
I would.
Council O'Neill.
I would like to remove number three, just for discussion.
Thank you. Anyone else like to remove anything? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as noted with the exception of item number three?
Second.
Moved by Council Grow, seconded by Council Memard. Roll call vote, Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross is absent. Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes with the exception of item number three, eight in favor, one absent. So Council O'Neill, you have the floor on item number three.
Thank you. I just want to bring it to the public's attention because this is going to be referred to BNF, Budget and Finance, and that meeting will be next Thursday, is that correct? At 6 o'clock at the Haba Masters office?
That is correct.
Okay. So I think members of the public who want to know where the $75,000 is going, who's getting it, how it's being spent, they should attend, if not in person, but by Zoom. And I do have a question, I don't know if I can ask it, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Do we know how much we've already spent on consultants regarding zoning?
So first of all, I'd like to correct the time. The time is at 5:30.
Okay.
Be enough.
5:30 Thursday at the Haba Masters office. Thank you very much.
And, and I would say the question, you can, you can ask that as request to the mayor to ask that at the end of the meeting. That would be the right time.
But I can't ask Budget and Finance. I can ask them by memo, right?
I'll ask it at the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So is there a motion to, to approve the referral to BNF for item number three?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Grow, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross is absent. Council Grow?
Yep.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Due to the holiday, the Budget and Finance Committee did not meet, so the next item would be the Ordinance and Administration meeting of November 20th.
And I will turn the meeting over to our ONA Chair, Council Nolan.
First off, we have CT 20. CT 2023 dash 056. Oh, sorry, 055 Memard, petition to state to lower the speed limit on Salt Island Private, number 17, to the dead end, Palfrey Road Private, from 30 miles an hour to 15 miles per hour. And Council Memard, would you like to speak on this?
Well, the, the Briar Neck Residents Association has a safety committee representing their members. They went through a betterment paving process, as you're all familiar, which resulted two years ago in the paving of eight of the roads on Salt Island Briar Neck. And as a natural consequence of the improvement from pothole to smooth pavement, speeding has become a, a, a safety, a life safety issue, and the Safety Committee of, of residents on Briar Neck have raised this, and they've explored a wide range of options resulting in this specific request. They've had a speed study performed, and they would like to have the council petition the state to lower the speed limit on Salt Island Road, which is private from number 17 to the dead end, and Palfrey Road, which is also private, and from 30 miles an hour to 15 miles per hour. There are several representatives here of the committee if there are questions for them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Memard. You did a great job on this. I'll read the committee report. On a motion by Council O'Hara, seconded by Council Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council forward a letter to the Mass DOT requesting that the speed limit on Salt Island Road, private number 17 to dead end, and Palfrey Road, private, be reduced to 15 miles per hour, and that such letter shall be accompanied by the speed study, a certificate of vote by the city council, and I so move.
Second.
Is there any questions for any residents or for Council Memard from the council?
The motion was made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council Worthley. Okay. So on the motion, go ahead. Council Nolan is asked for questions.
So I have no objection to obviously lowering the speed limit. I know, right? Who would absorb the cost of putting the signs up? Would that be the state because they allowed it, the city because they requested it, or the citizens because it's either? I know it's not a huge expense, I'm just curious.
I, I think that once, if I may respond, my understanding, Council Nolan can correct me if I'm wrong, but that we typically go, once it's approved, once it's reflected in the city ordinance at clerk's office, and then the DPW is responsible to post the appropriate signage.
That is correct.
Conform with legal standards.
Any other discussion, councilors? Seeing none. We will do our roll call vote, which is Council Memard.
Absolutely, yes.
Council Nolan?
Absolutely.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross is absent. Council Grow?
Yep.
Council Majota?
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Council Nolan.
First, I'd like to thank the residents from that area for coming out tonight. See you guys sitting there. Thank you for supporting this. So next up is CC 2023 056, Nolan, poll special act, authorization of the mayor to petition the general court to designate emergency polling locations. If I could, I'll read the recommendation, and then we'll go on for discussion. On a motion by Council Nolan, seconded by Council Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council request for the state legislators file a home rule petition, and based on said petition, the general court approve and enact a special act substantially as follows. Whereas, the city recognizes that emergency situations may arise affecting the ability of citizens to safely and efficiently cast their vote. Whereas, the city desires to ensure the alternative measures are available to allow for the safe and efficient voting of all citizens in the city. Now, therefore, it is hereby move the city council votes to authorize the mayor to petition the general court for a special act in the form set forth below, provided by the city council to designate a polling place in a public, convenient, and orderly location in a precinct. However, if public convenience would be better served, it may designate in polling place in any other precinct provided. However, that the general court may make clerical editorial changes of form only to bill unless mayor approves amendments to the bill before the enactment by the general court, and provided further that the mayor is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. Be enacted by the Senate and the House of Representatives, and the general court assembled, and by the authority of the same as follows. Northward standing, section 24 of chapter 54, and the general laws or any other general or special law, to the contrary, the city council of the city of Gloucester shall designate the polling place for each voting precinct in a public, orderly, and convenient portion of the precinct, providing however that if the city council determines that the public convenience would be better served, it may designate a polling place in any other precinct of the city, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council Worthley. On the motion, Council Nolan.
On the motion, if we could have Joanne step in for a second?
Thank you. We have putting to place, or we're starting to put into place, an emergency election plan, just in case, as for instance, in West Gloucester, the electricity went down this past Sunday. And the Massachusetts General Law for Cities has to designate a polling place in each ward and precinct. But if it's not possible to do that, and if we have an emergency to move, if it's declared an emergency, we have to move it to another place. And if that whole area is without power, then this would allow us to bring it to not only in an adjacent, but something out of the ward and precinct. So just say we could move it to City Hall if we had to on that. So we wanted to put this into place. The state recommended an emergency plan during COVID, but they lacked kind of the polling places because of COVID, and the city council was able to move that without a special act. But now that COVID is no longer in effect and not a state of emergency, then we would need a special act in order to move a polling location out of, out of the precinct. And so this is, we're working with public safety, we're working with the administration, and this will allow us to, to move it and then put it in the emergency plan and what the order of business would be.
Excellent. Thank you, Joanne. Is there any other questions from any council? Council Worthley?
Thank you, Council Nolan. This is a question for Joanne. I'll, I'll be supporting it, but just a couple of questions. The motion said declared state of emergency. Who does the declaring? Is that a state or is that a city declaration?
It could be either. It could be like if the governor declares a state of emergency, or if it's a state of emergency or in Gloucester, so the mayor would declare it, yes.
So can the mayor declare a state of emergency? Okay. I heard in there that the council could have some role in this, and I was just thinking, if there's a power outage, the ability to pull a council meeting together in a state of emergency needing notification and public hearing, I mean, public notification wouldn't give you the same flexibility that you need, but you're confident that, that, please, sorry.
Well, if you don't mind me answering my question. This basically stipulates that he can call a state of emergency under voting process. And I believe that also includes under the state that they could be extended hours for that precinct if they had to move it to make up for time lost.
Okay. So the extended hours or any change in the hours, once the warrant is accepted and everything, we would have to get a court order. And legal department plus the Secretary of State's office would help us do that in order to reduce the hours or extend the hours.
You got a court order, I'm sorry for me.
You do.
If you get a court order to extend the time, but if you're declaring a state, or the mayor declares a state of emergency at 4 o'clock on Tuesday, you're not getting a court order to move the remaining hours of operation.
Well, to, to extend it, we would have to extend it if, if the voting was stopped at some point because of the state of emergency. You still need a court order according to the state.
Court's closed, though. So just.
They would have connections to get a judge to, to hear us, and legal would present it, yes.
All right. Sounds good.
Imagine that would happen pretty quick on a voting institution.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Council O'Neill?
I have a question.
Also, I will let you know that Jill Cahill is on the phone as our CAO, so she can also answer a question.
So power went out in West Gloucester, Magnolia, Sunday, which obviously wasn't a voting day. But what is a current policy if and when that happens on a voting day?
That's what we're doing now.
Yeah, but what, what is the current policy now?
Well, we, we have, we don't have it in writing yet. We're working on an emergency plan to put it in writing, so what usually happens is we inform the state what happens. And there is a certain time in which if the voting is closed down, they tell you like, if you know it's going to come up in an hour or whatever, that you can like halt the voting, but then after you would want, probably want to extend it at the other end if you do halt the voting at that time there. So it would be, it, it, it all depends. And then after, we would have to go get a court order. So everything would have to do, be quickly on that. So right now, if anything happened, first it would be determined whether we can keep the voting location in that same ward and precinct. And then after, if not, what we would have to do is do a reverse, figure out where we're going to put the voting location, just say it was City Hall. We would have to reverse, do a reverse 911 call to all those registered voters, tell them where, where the precinct has been located to the ward and precinct, and then do the court order and extend the hours.
So also, I have this crazy question. What if we lost power for like five or six hours in that one precinct? Instead of the polls closing at eight, is it seven or eight?
Eight.
Eight, okay. Would we, would it be extended to the Wednesday, in other words?
Well, you.
It would go from, and you'd add five hours to the eight at 8:00 PM or midnight or?
You can. I mean, towns have done that. The town of Bonstable.
But it would never go to the Wednesday.
In order, I'm not sure about that.
I'm just not a night owl.
Because what happens is that you, just in case you cannot have the, the election on the day that you say you're going to have, you need a court order to change the date of the election. So it all depends on the circumstance. If it's two, three hours, you go to the court and extend it to 11 o'clock, extend it to 12. I know in Bonstable, they did have a problem where they couldn't get the vault open, and they were waiting for a locksmith, and they had voting till midnight. Okay? But towns can reduce their hours only because they're a town. Cities, we have from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So it all depends on the circumstance.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion?
We're hoping that never happens.
So motions are made, it's been seconded. So motions are made, it's been seconded. I guess we're ready for roll call vote. Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross is absent. Counsel Grow.
Yep.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Yes's have it, eight in favor, one absent. Thank you. Next order of business.
Okay, so the planning development committee on November 22nd did not meet. So the next item is scheduled public hearing number one, public hearing 2023-051, amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, chapter 21, streets, sidewalks, and other public places, article one in general, section 21-1 prerequisite to acceptance of private ways by deleting current section 21-1 and adding a new section 21-1 acceptance of private ways. And this was continued from October 24th, 2023.
I'd like to open the public hearing and continue it to December 12th, 2023, city council meeting. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is public hearing 2023-054, amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, chapter 21, streets, sidewalks, and other public places by adding a new article five entitled Petition for Alteration of Private Way.
This public hearing will be opened and continued to the December 12th, 2023, city council meeting. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is individual counselors discussion, including reports by appointed counselors to committees. It'll be Counsel Memard, city council statement, we got in the 400th celebration.
Counsel Memard.
Do individual discussions before?
No, that's a council request to the mayor.
Yeah, individuals discussion, including reports by.
We have not, we have none except for this. Go ahead.
Unless you'd like.
I would, but apparently we just.
I'm going to read our statement regarding the Gloucester 400th celebration. 2023 marks 400 years since the English Dorchester Company landed on our shores. Gloucester sits on the ancestral homeland of the Potucket people and their neighbors, the Massachusetts, Nipmuck, and Penecook, and Wampanoag tribes. Please enjoy the year-long and multiple events throughout 2023, most of which will be free or low cost, and visit Gloucester MA, Gloucester MA 400.org for a list of upcoming events. Like and share the Gloucester 400 Facebook page, and to receive major event notifications by mail or email, please send a request to info@gloucesterma400.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'd just like to add something to the briefing on the 400th. The city council, we're excited to be honoring the leaders of the Gloucester 400th at the beginning of our final 2023 city council meeting on December 12th. And I just ask that counselors go to the clerk's office in the next week and a half to sign the proclamations. So that would be great. So we're excited about that. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Counselor's request to the mayor.
Okay, so here we are, and we will do it in the order of roll call vote. So Counsel Memard.
I have one item for the mayor, and it reflects sort of the wrap-up of the Mount Pleasant Avenue paving and infrastructure project. There's a small private road called Highland Court that connects Highland Street and Mount Pleasant Avenue. It is a private way, and it, it is a dirt road. It was in fairly good shape before the infrastructure project of the last year and a half. And during the construction on Mount Pleasant, the Highland Court neighborhood has had a substantial increase in heavy machinery, construction equipment, using the Highland Court as a turnaround connection and pass-through and to store stuff. And it's resulted in major damage in a large pothole on, multiple large potholes on Highland Court, and residents on Highland Court would appreciate the city's attention through the mayor's office to addressing and putting it back, at least in the original condition, for utilization by the city for the major construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Nolan.
I do have one request to the mayor and one general thank you to the public. My request to the mayor tonight would be if we could look into Thompson Road in West Gloucester being a public road to see about a water project over there. It is public. That would be wonderful, thank you. And then also, I'd like to send thanks out to Ringo Tarr and his committee for another beautiful parade and tree lighting down the boulevard. Thank you, Ringo and committee.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. I have no request to the mayor, but I ask everyone to keep the men and women of the armed forces in thoughts and prayers during this holiday season. They're protecting us 24/7, 365, and it's very evident in the Middle East, the Persian Gulf, South, South China Sea. We have many, many strike forces present to hopefully keep the world at peace, and we're thankful for the men and women who do serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I also want to recognize that John Dunn, our CFO, is on the call. I imagine he's been on for a while. Sorry about that, John. And Val Marino from our HR department is also on the call. Counsel O'Neill, any requests?
Yes, thank you. I would like to request that the mayor look into, as well as Thompson Road, Whitesmutton Road and that neighborhood. I do understand that it's a public road. Nope, it's a private road with private, private pipes. And Ross Island neighborhood is a private road with public pipes. I would like to understand why one area got public road, public pipes, and one area got private pipes. I don't know how that worked that way, and I'm wondering if he can look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Worthley.
Yes, a couple announcements. First, I think we should all have a big thank you to Mark Nestor and the effort he put together, and all the volunteers to deliver over 700 Thanksgiving meals to veterans, disabled, and shut-ins, mostly our citizens, but throughout the North Shore. And Mark Nestor through Legion Post 3 was happy to volunteer and join. I think we had about 100 volunteers. That was, that was an awesome morning on Thanksgiving. You mentioned the Kent Circle tree lighting. There's also the Lobster Trap Christmas tree lighting, which is now moved to Sullivan Jacob Parks because of construction at the police station and courthouse. I've been involved with that since 2001. This is, I think, 22 years now, and love to see that happening again. That's Saturday, December 9th at 4:30. We also have been invited, and the public's been invited, by Rabbi Kudin to the public free concert, Hanukkah concert on Tuesday, December 12th, at Temple Ahava Hakim at 5:30 at 86 Middle Street. I doubt that we'll be able to make that because that is a city council meeting, but I want to extend that invitation to the public. And then the last one is sort of a request to the mayor also from the council. We've been having some challenges, and we probably all hear it differently, but with the acoustics in here, that microphone, if there's a way to turn it up louder or make the neck closer to people's mouths, so people, I think Mr. Doe, he's taller than me, and so that when you're trying to get close to the microphone, that's hard to do. But it's also the people on the Zoom call are really loud here in Kyros. Is there a way to adjust that so it's kind of level? I guess that's a request to the mayor and to our IT department as well. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Grow.
Just very quickly, a couple people mentioned the comprehensive planning initiative tonight. Just want to point out that there's a very easy way to register at least the most basic of your opinions, which is to go to the city website, Gloucester MA dot, or Gloucester-MA.gov. And right at the top of it is the comprehensive plan. It says get involved. That takes you to a survey, takes about five, 10 minutes to start, to put together. But at the very least, everybody can take that much time to put their, their thoughts to, to the, the survey, and that will take just a few minutes of your time.
Thank you. Counsel Majota.
No request to the mayor.
And I'm last, so I would just like to share that I did attend the first comprehensive plan meeting at the Lanesville Community Center. Counsel Worthley joined me. What? In a box. It was a box, yes. And I was the. I was actually, exactly, we were sitting around a table there. I think there were six in our box, our table, but I was in there, I was the scribe. And we did, I think, seven of the eight questions that they asked us to, and it was kind of a free-flow brainstorming opportunity. And it was actually very interactive and quite helpful. So I ask you all to look on the city website and see how you can organize these types of meetings on your own. And also, there is, as Counsel Grow said, who chairs P and D, there's an opportunity to actually take a survey, which takes about 15 to 20 minutes. So all this is getting loaded into a database, and we're doing some data collection, and it's pretty cool. So I'm excited about that, and kudos to the Lanesville Community Center for taking a leadership role and trying this out for the first time, and it was very interesting.
Val Nelson in concert with the Cape In Climate Coalition. So that was kind of the group that partnered with the Lanesville Community Center. But it was interesting. I think it tended maybe 24 people. So anyway, so that's all I have to say. So I think that's it. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's made by Counsel Grow, seconded by Counsel Nolan tied with Counsel Worthley, and we'll do a roll call vote to adjourn the meeting. Counsel Memard.
Yes, and good night.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes, and good night.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes, and thank you.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross is absent. Counsel Grow.
Yep.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
The meeting is officially adjourned, eight in favor, one absent. Thank you.